So yes, let's see, I can pull this up for you if you want. It's kind of the. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So whenever you're ready to call it to order, I can.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody to zoning board appeals meeting. February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. Let's introduce the board members. Brian Zelik, Corey Whiteside, and Christine Mizada. And. We're streaming tonight on Zoom, and myself, Vice Chair Lenny Tubbs. First, I lost it. If there are any changes in the agenda, they should be announced to make specifically attending for that item, and everybody's aware of it. We will follow the agenda with public hearing. For each item during first part of the meeting, this is a time for all information we stated for record. For each item, we begin with presentation by the applicant, the board, with board questions. The public invite is then the public is invited to speak. Once the public hearing is closed, no more information will be presented. Regular meeting follows. Voter four in favor for any variance to be approved is required. There being four of us here tonight, it would take a unanimous decision for any variance to be approved. Are there any questions on the procedure?
Thank you.
Yes?
Oh, no, I said, thank you.
Okay, we'll start by opening up.
I guess Christine isn't on. She's hold on, she's trying to get the link.
Kristen's not on though.
Kristen is Christine Mizada is not on. Just trying to.
We're waiting for another member to get signed out. She's having some technical difficulties.
I think I'm here.
Oh, yep. All right.
Okay, we'll start with the first item on the agenda. DVA twenty twenty-three dash oh three fifty-one Woodlawn Road map ten dash four block eighty-three C slot forty-three Danielle Whitman. Protech Electronics LLC, DVA Protech Automotive Solutions is requesting a motor vehicle use approval per zoning Berlin zoning regulations. Eleven R fifteen in the Berlin town in zone one.
Yes, and actually, the address is fifty-three Woodlawn. It's it's attached to fifty-one Woodlawn, but it's a separate street number.
Yeah, Maureen wrote on the staff report. She she that it was a.
I just didn't want to cross it because we had already gotten an automotive type permission for fifty-one.
Says the new entity will have a mailing address for fifty-three Woodlawn.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
But yes, what we would be requesting permission to do is bring in Protech Automotive Solutions, Protech Electronics LLC. They are the calibration and diagnostic provider that's a sister company. There wouldn't be any any waste or any mechanical work from that portion of the business. It's it's for calibration of sensors. It's the electrical systems. We use a PCU, basically a computer unit, to scan the cars computer, and then we use the the OEM scanners to recalibrate all those sensitive computer parts, and it'd be happening in that block addition that had previously been added. There's just two bays there that we would be doing the the calibrations and whatnot out of, and then we would also have a van that could could go on the spot if they needed to at a dealership or another shop.
I have I have just one question. When did this lot get split into two different addresses?
Um, late last year, early this year. We can't have two MBR licenses at the same address. They they require separate mailing addresses. So we asked Doug over at the the addresses department, and he suggested turning that addition into fifty-three, and he assigned the new address then.
Yeah, Maureen wanted me to clarify that the the unit address is fifty-three.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
There's nothing on this plot plan that says it's fifty-three. It's listed as attached to fifty-one. That's the only address I have.
Is it Doug in the addressing department had suggested just re relisting? Just so that there's basically a unit number on the addition where we would be doing the the calibrations.
Hi, this is Maureen. I joined the meeting just when I heard there was an issue with logging in. So can I speak?
Maureen.
Oh, hi, Maureen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the property is identified, the parcel is fifty-one. That's the parcel address that goes with the map block lot, and the address is fifty-one. Um, I would suggest that the applicant provide a clarification or whether or not the motor vehicle department will need DMV, that is, will need a delineation on their plot plan as to what portion of the property is assigned to each use, each licensing use, but they can have multiple mailing addresses. So the unit mailing address will be fifty-three for this new application, and but the parcel itself is identified as number fifty-one on our assessor's record.
Yeah, for DMV, they want the separated mailing address is their concern.
The maps typically show what each license area, limit of the license area is. I've never had this situation before and don't know what their criteria are for having two licenses on the same parcel. But I would imagine that they would want them each defined as having a limit of the license area. One other thing in the staff report that I called out was that we have three, and I don't know if you discussed this before I jumped on, but we have three copies of a or three originals of the motor vehicle license application. Those were included in the commission's packets.
They require us to have a separate application for each officer.
We have that.
So yeah, so I I was hoping that Chairman, Co-Chairman Tubbs would understand why there were three of those, but I did not. I've never seen multiple applications come through to us, and I want to make sure that the zoning board is familiar and okay with us issuing one for each.
I believe the only time they have to do that is when they have more than one chief operating officer. I think they have three different CEOs, CFO.
Yes.
But yeah, I believe I read that, but I am concerned as to the address. I'm almost positive that motor vehicle is going to require you to tell them where you're going to be on this property and have the separate address listed on the map or on the plot plan.
The plans, as I've provided to DMV, do delineate the unit that we would be in. It's it's highlighted.
Why we didn't get that plan?
It didn't come up in color. I thought I printed in color. But yes, and this would be a limited repair license, not a general repair license, because we would only be doing the computer scanning and calibration work.
Okay, is Corey or anybody else have any other questions?
No. I'm good.
Christine?
I'm good. Thank you.
I have no other questions. Like I said, my only concern is that the address is on this map, and it's not it's not listed on here that what part of the building you're going to occupy. It's just shown as a as built.
I can hold up the plans as they're being submitted to DMV if you if you'd like to see it.
We have to, I believe we have to have them as part of our record. Am I correct? Maureen, you still there?
I am still here, and because I'm not in the building, I'm wondering, Dylan, does our file show have a copy that is highlighted with the areas delineated?
I know. So the the full-size map that I had is the one I gave to Lenny.
Nothing on that now.
So I would suggest if Ms. Whitman, is that the correct name? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
On my screen. Do you have a digital copy of that that you could share on your screen and make sure we get it? We are supposed to have exactly what is going to Department of Motor Vehicle is supposed to be what gets submitted for this review. And I'm sorry if that wasn't clear, or if you didn't realize you didn't give us.
I just didn't realize you did not get the color copy.
You should be able to share your screen if you can pull it up on your screen.
So what I'll do is Danielle, I will make you a co-host, so that way.
Probably don't have to. She probably can do it without co-hosting. Have her try that way first, because then you won't lose. You shouldn't lose your hosting. She can do it.
Okay.
We can hope. Otherwise, you have to make her. Do you think you would have emailed it to us?
I don't believe I did email.
Okay. Can she just take a snappy with her phone and and text it over or email it from there? Yeah. That could work. Sorry for the delay, everybody. Eighteen minutes of it was my fault.
I can share my screen, so she should be able to do it.
Okay.
So if you just took a picture, you should be able to email it to Dylan and help share it or email it to yourself and share it.
So sorry for the delay. Hold on. The email filter slowed it down. There, I sent it to Dylan, but I can try to pull it up on my. Yeah, that's the that's a delineation that I I provided for DMV.
It's yeah, it's written.
Kind of can see it, but I can't.
Yeah.
Is it coming up really small?
I'm looking at it from forty feet away.
I'm sorry. So the address is on the portion of the building, which is the addition that the addresses has penciled in or written.
Yeah.
Written in on the portion of the building that is highlighted in green.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question that no outdoor area is delineated for this for the motor, this motor vehicle use.
Well, there there would be no need for an outdoor area.
And that's fine with motor vehicle?
They haven't said anything about it. They they have the the rest of the application under review.
Yeah, I just wanted to call that to the commission, to the board's attention.
I'm not I'm not positive how that is for a business like this, Maureen. They do have bays to operate out of, so what what they're going to have there, I have no idea.
Like it's it's kind of a unique form of auto repair.
I know. I know exactly what you're doing. You're doing ADAS adjustments for the new automatic.
Yeah.
So I would just suggest that the that the board, should they make a motion to approve, include that it's on a site on a parcel that has another motor vehicle use, and therefore the exterior parking is intermingled. Because in the zoning regulations, you call, if I I don't have my regulations in front of me either, but I believe there is a requirement of a certain number of parking space for each bay. Those would have already been allocated when you gave a motor vehicle license for the entire parcel. So what we just wouldn't want to have happen is no outdoor area be recognized for this use if should something happen to the other motor vehicle use on the property.
Well, they do have to have a certain, a couple of parking spaces for their own employees.
But it's three per bay, so the the facility itself isn't changing the number of days that exist on the site.
Yeah, and this.
Site changes for it. So I just I just think that if you were to make a motion to approve, you'd just want to reference that. Those are part of the the overall site layout is in conjunction with the site layout for the motor vehicle use at fifty-one. The way I would.
Yeah, because this this would be a business-to-business type situation. There wouldn't be direct direct customers from outside. It's it's business-to-business.
Okay, I have no more questions. Corey?
No.
Good. Ryan?
I'm good.
Christine?
I'm good.
That being said, it's a motion to close this portion of the hearing.
Close the hearing, number one. Final second.
All in favor?
Hi. Whiteside, hi. Really guy.
Tubbs, I might want to do a roll call on it next time, so they don't go over each other. Okay, item two or item B on the agenda. ZVA twenty-three dash oh four five Huckleberry Lane, map eight dash four block eighteen lot eighteen lot twenty-eight J. Linda Sukasian. Is requesting a variance to the zoning board of appeals regulations. Eleven T one TI allow, which allows seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot accessory dwelling to allow seven hundred and sixty-eight foot square foot accessory dwelling unit where the limit is seven, seven hundred is allowed. Speaking for the application.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not there, but we're all ill over here.
Name your name for the record, please.
Linda Sukasian.
Where's yours, Linda?
Okay, thank you. I I kind of feel like I'm flying by the seat of my pants here. Not only am I ill, but the architect could not join me tonight, and the contractor is outstanding. He he does plowing and sanding during the winter for businesses. So he's not that he's not around. Well, the 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 space, usable space based on a blueprint plan is seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. And if you could picture a rectangle in front of you horizontally, a rectangle, this unfinished portion of my basement is such that it would be impossible to reconfigure the plan to meet the seven hundred square feet requirement. And I did receive something from the architect, which, if you don't mind, I'll read. And it would clarify some of the reasons why it would be impossible to reconfigure the plan. I'm not sure if everyone has seen the plan or if it's in front of you, but a large portion of the unfinished basement is is a large utility room. But I'll read what the architect wrote.
Linda, Linda, before you start, if I may, if I may just interrupt for one moment.
Of course.
If you can't, once you're done reading that letter, if you can possibly submit that to me, whether it's in person or through email, I that would be appreciated.
Oh, sure thing. I can do that. Yeah. It's from the architect Andre Galca. Hi, Linda, your plan is determined by the location of existing construction elements, the existing bathroom plumbing, existing stair access to the basement, existing bearing wall between the utility room and the new bedroom and foyer space, location of the existing exit and entrance to the space from the outside. In order to make your new apartment smaller by this sixty-eight square feet, you will have to move some of these elements and assign this cutout space to take part of the utility room. However, that would cause a major hardship. He said, for the following reasons, this is not possible or would be very costly, which I know financially is not really part of a hardship definition, but he did include it. Number one, relocating of existing toilet and laundry plumbing will require. will require extensive under-the-slab work for two new waste lines, reconfiguring of required and existing pipe slopes, slaps. Since elevation of the existing discharge from the house is unknown, it is impossible to determine if this is even possible. Number two, moving of the existing basement stair in the living room direction to make it smaller by sixty-eight square feet is not feasible since this stairway is extending above to your second floor. Moving the wall between the utility space and the new bedroom in order to remove sixty-eight square feet from the bedroom space will make it non-code compliant. Um, because it will reduce the bedroom size by too much. Making the new foyer space smaller will require relocation of existing exterior door. And this will require the reframing of exterior wall and reconfiguration of the foundation wall, which is quite cost prohibitive and labor-intensive. Conclusion, making the proposed apartment smaller in order to meet the seven hundred square foot limit will require much new construction and spending and will create a space much more difficult to adapt for the proposed function. And when I, I, I remember when I submitted my application, I think, and I, I, you know, wasn't aware of all of these specific details, but I remember he told me when Andre first came to look at the the space, three of the four walls are below grade and they decrease. They, for most of, most of the three of the four walls, the long wall that you see to the right there would be my only egress. So it would be impossible to reconfigure. They, if you look at that, you know, large rectangle, a horizontal rectangle in front of you, coming from the side would be impossible because the egress door and windows are along this long window. So those are my reasons for hoping that the board will allow the sixty-eight square feet. Yeah, it's better if I try to answer some questions, even though the others aren't here. The gentlemen aren't here. I could try and answer some questions.
Commissioner Whiteside, I have no questions. I just wanted to compliment you on your narrative there for the hardship explanation. We rarely see something like this, and it was very helpful.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. I'm very appreciative of that. I, like I said, I really felt like I was flying by the seat of my pants. This is all very new to me. And I'm grateful. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Zalek, I have no questions.
Christine? Commissioner Rosado?
All set.
I have no other questions. Is there anybody else?
Four. Staff comments? No.
I'll just, this is Maureen. I'll just add for the record so that everybody's clear. I'm not sure if it was said because I had a disruption here. But the, the application is also pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission for their accessory dwelling unit as a special permit use in the, in the zone. So depending on the outcome of this, they, she will be proceeding to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just for the record.
Isn't that kind of backwards that the planning and zoning is not seeing it before us?
There, so they, so planning and zoning did see it. Uh, but because the square footage was sixty-eight square feet over the seven hundred foot requirement, they had to get sent to ZBA before it could continue through them.
Well, I have no questions. I think it was very well presented.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, motion to close open hearing for twenty-two-three dash oh-four.
We made a motion to close public hearing.
First, I have to ask, is there's anybody else to speak for? Or anybody here to speak against the application? None being heard. Commissioner Zalek, I mean, Commissioner Whiteside made a motion to to close this portion of the hearing for.
Yep. The question is.
Dash four. All in favor? We're going to do a roll call instead of.
Yep. Uh, so Commissioner Zalek.
Aye.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Aye.
Commissioner Mazada?
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Tubbs.
Aye. Let's open a regular meeting. ZBA twenty-two-three dash oh-three fifty-one Woodlawn, map ten dash four, block eighty-three C, lot forty-three. Could I get a motion? To, any? Do we have any more comments on this application? For the members only?
No. I'm good to approve the twenty-two-three dash oh-three application for vehicle use location approval.
Commissioner Zalek will second.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Zalek?
Aye.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Aye.
Commissioner Mazada?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Tubbs?
Aye. Motion passes. Open up the, for ZBA twenty-three dash oh-four five Huckleberry Lane, map eight dash four, block twenty-eight, lot block thirty-eight, lot twenty-eight J. They get a motion to open this motion to approve this application.
Commissioner Zalek will make a motion to approve the application.
Now, I said second.
All right. So Commissioner Zalek?
Aye.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Aye.
Commissioner Mazada?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Tubbs?
Aye. You're all set.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm grateful.
You have any other business to leave here? I don't have any minutes or anything to improve.
Uh, no, no, I don't believe I included anything. I do have, so the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Association, they're doing their dinner at AquaTurf, March twenty-third. I have Tony as a yes and Ryan Mattson as a yes. Was, was there anyone else?
When is that, the twenty-third?
Yeah, March twenty-third at AquaTurf in Sullington.
Don't we have to do some kind of put in some kind of hours to you?
So that, so that was the next thing. The next thing was the Connecticut Bar Association Land Use Seminar. The, the deadline for registrations passed. However, we could still try to attempt to sign anyone up if they're interested. For that, I have Tony, Christine and Corey.
Yeah, if you can give me a, I'd, I'd.
Wait on that again, please.
You have to do it to stay on, right? The requirement now is four hours?
I believe so, yeah. Um, and that's on, that's on March eleventh.
I'll call you tomorrow and make sure.
Okay.
It sounds, maybe there's might be a reason why I didn't do it the first time.
Okay.
Anybody interested in going to the dinner on the twenty-third?
I can't make it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Ryan, what about the Connecticut Land Use Law Seminar on the eleventh?
No, I can't do that either. March is kind of hectic.
Okay.
What other way are, what other options are there to get that mandatory hours you're talking about?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can.
I know that dinner is one hour. They're, I'll give you one hour.
I said, so AquaTurf should count for one hour.
Yeah.
So on twenty-third, that'll count for one hour. And then.
The one on the eleventh will count for the whole four hours.
Four. And then, uh, there should be other opportunities coming up throughout the year, including things from UConn Clear or put out by other organizations. So whenever we get the information for that, we'll pass it on forward.
Appreciate it. Do you have anything else? Can you get her? So can I get a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Zalek.
Uh, Commissioner Zalek?
Aye.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Aye.
Commissioner Mazada?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Tubbs?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you again.
Very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Bye.